Back when I was working for the East Tennessee Business Group. Child, we get a lot of this, but they have a plan. Listeners, how they get it, I don't know what they get somehow. And that's it. Yeah. Well, he's probably all over him. He just, he's talking to you. That should be one thousand. Like he had some. You'll probably see. Yeah. He got a Steve O'Dea.
I mean, it's good. Don't get me wrong, you know, because I'm gonna earn my maximum. And I am.
But you don't, you don't. Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, you're going into a green. Different perspective. It works for major states.
Recording in progress.
All main to order. It's not on here, but I'm gonna ask that we ladies stand for a moment. And then I'll ask the shuls if she would please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. If you have not already done so, please, I apologize. Can you take a look at the agenda really? There's only one op on there, which is dealing with the budget. It does have several segments. And if it's still a little business op, I think you would add, entertain a motion to approve.
Could we add third grade permission just a short report by Kim? We're not gonna do discussion. Let her get a quick report on it. Do that's okay?
I thought. Most of the friends, Mr. Williams, sent by Mr. Roberts. All the papers they have. With that said, Mr. Williams, I don't wanna talk to some people. And then go to your time in when I log in.
And I'll make that part of the director of the way. Before we start, just got some bad news. Rusty Clark, Governor Rusty, they just found him. He just passed away. He's SRO in the house. Boy, he's been several places. And I just gotta bump up our remorse. He said that he was together and they just kind of gave us some keep up the prayers. Okay. All right, I'm gonna let Kim, Kim just, and we need to keep this brief because now on the agenda, I'll just let her kind of give a quick overview of where we are and where we stand. A lot of controversy about where we are and she's got the full details. So Kim, I could put you on the spot too much.
On the spot. I hope you all got the email that I sent out on Friday. That pretty much was the latest and greatest information that we have. We did, of course, on the initial test, have about thirty-five percent of our students who were able to move on and then we gave the retake. We currently stand with only about twelve point seven percent of our students who have to attend summer school and get tutored next year or be retained, which I'm very happy with. I've worked with lots of parents both Friday and then today. The appeal opened today and I've worked with several parents to make sure that they could follow the appeal. We sent the information to parents. Some principals mailed it. Some were able to get it out before students left last week to make sure that they had the student ID number as well as their benchmark assessment score. So I think that we are in pretty good shape. Summer school starts Monday, so we will work this week to make sure that any third graders who, I've asked principals if they had any third graders at all who scored below, who had not signed up for summer school, which we did have a handful, to call those parents individually to make sure that they understood that they aren't signing up. And again, that was only just a very few students who had not at least signed up for summer school. So I think that we are in good shape. I think that I'm happy with those numbers. Of course, I would love to have one hundred percent, but after the retake, the numbers that we have are something that we can handle. We can deal with those numbers. One thing that we are now trying to figure out is the amount of tutors that we need. And I wanted to come to you tonight with an amount of tutors that I projected that we need, but then I looked at the paths that people can, so they can select one of three paths. They can go to summer school or receive tutoring or follow the appeal. And that's for our approaching students, which is the majority of our students who scored below. The majority were approaching. So they have those three options. They don't have to make a choice about those three options until June fourteenth, because they have two weeks from the time that the appeal opened. And so I can guesstimate, but until those appeals are filed and parents make that selection, I cannot give you a hard and fast number. I know that we will have to have tutors in place because all of the below students are required to be tutored all year long regardless. And then third, the approaching students can select to be tutored as one of their options. And many of them are selecting that instead of filing the appeal because they feel that the tutoring piece would be good for their students regardless. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Are you planning to have us something for the junior meeting where kind of give us a little breakdown where we stood in comparison with our surrounding campus?
I can, I can do that.
Kim, will these tutors, will they get schooled all day long or will they, will they tutor during the day?
Yes.
Okay. So you'd like to pull that program?
Yes. We'll do it. We already have that existing RTI swarm time. We already had our all core tutors in place doing that. So locally, we have that piece in place. We will just add to that to make sure that all of the students who are required to have tutoring have it during that swarm time.
How many kids are attending each school?
Oh goodness, it's all over the place. We have a low of fifty some odd and a high of, I think eighty-nine is our highest.
So it's all the schools are?
All of the schools are open for summer school. Clark Memorial, of course, having worked into it. So Clark Memorial's teachers and students are according to Deckard for summer school. They'll all be housed at Deckard. They will be with their own peers.
And our tutors are certified?
No, tutors are not necessarily certified. They all have to be trained. They all follow the program. Some are certified, the majority are not certified.
Are the, so are the tutors going to be people that we will need to hire additionally? Are they going to be some of like our learning loss people that we already have in the building? Like, how do you envision this working out?
We will use all of our learning loss people that we already have in the building. That's why I'm saying we already have that mechanism in place. RTI, if the groups are no more than three to one, can also count as a tutor piece. So we already have that in place. Until we have firm numbers, I'm not sure. I anticipate that we will have to hire a couple more tutors, especially for our larger schools. We already have five tutors right now at Clark Memorial, for example. That's our largest elementary school. Most of our schools already have three tutors in place through the all core learning loss program. And as they, as they meet with their groups, of course, three tutors is nine students that they can serve. But then when you add the RTI students to that also, then that ups that by six students. Typically, some schools, nine students in that swarm one time. So that's a pretty good number of students that you can serve during that block of time.
Is there an exit exam at the end of summer school? And show where these? Now, these kids that are attending summer school, if they choose to stop, that's no reflection on them unless they're in the group that has to attend, right?
Correct.
Somebody asked me that the other day, if they would penalize if they stopped.
If they are in the below group, they have to have ninety percent attendance.
But if they're not and they're just attending?
They're just attending to be attending for the extra support, then there's no point. And we are offering an additional week, July seventeenth through the twenty-first, in case families had vacations planned so that they can make up those days. We want, we want to try to get our students every opportunity to be able to be successful and move on. And so we are doing an extra week.
One more thing, then. So obviously, this also puts a huge burden on our teachers who have all had a challenging, challenging year. And then not only are putting in these four weeks, but then they're gonna put in another week.
But if they choose to do that?
I mean, they're not, so they're not, we're not having another full week at every school. We're only doing a week for third graders who had to miss days for whatever reason. And we're hiring two teachers right now to do that, not everybody. So they'll have their full July as they would typically.
Now say that again, Kim.
For the extra week in July, the seventeenth through the twenty-first.
That's just for the ones in the, the ones who have to attend?
Yes, just for the ones who have to attend and miss days for whatever reason. So we anticipate that'll only be a few students. Most families in third grade have anticipated this, if their students have been struggling throughout the year and have not planned vacations. But there are a few who thought their child might make it, planned a vacation. And so we wanna make sure that those kids have an opportunity to make those days up. They have to make it up prior to the beginning of school year. That's a, that's a requirement, I'd say. Any other questions? Mr. Williams, is there anything else you'd like me to share?
No, thanks, Coach. Appreciate you being here, sharing that with us. Should do a.
I can do that day.
Okay, now on with budget. Do you want to go ahead and approve the other budget, federal budget and cafeteria budget? Let's do those first. Get those out of the way.
We're having some technical difficulty. Give us, if you were looking back at us to check.
The federal project budget first, I guess.
This budget is as the plan has the federal projects today. The budget's down to a hundred percent in and out funds.
Should approve the FY twenty-four federal projects budget.
Motion to approve the federal projects budget, Mr. Williams, number seven. Number seven, Mr. Jones. All the budgets I have. That motion carries.
Then we also have cafeteria.
This budget is balanced. You'll see this year, we're projecting for almost three hundred thousand back into fund balance. Make the fund balance real large.
Motion to approve the FLY forty-three cafeteria budget for FY twenty-four.
Motion to approve cafeteria budget, Mr. Williams, number second, Mr. Schultz. All the budgets I have. That motion carries.
All right, the school record, school board budget. Okay, we had voted on and submitted a budget. We called it a excellent budget. It was approved by Andrea. I hope Andrea, just speaking, cut me off. I think I must say something that you don't agree with. But Andrea, it was approved. We submitted it to the finance committee the other night. And during the meeting, some of you were there. It was brought up by Mr. Eldridge. Different way to figure the maintenance of effort. And felt blindsided, to be honest with you. For one reason, you know, we made a big deal about having a county school committee, education committee. And I felt like they should have been, had an opportunity to see what this proposal was gonna be before it basically shot down, brought back to us to try to pass a new budget. And I really felt bad for, for our school committee because I felt like they should have had the opportunity to first. And I think that there was enough time, we'd been notified that this change was gonna happen, that we could have had a emergency school committee meeting and let them see it and get their thoughts on this. But it brought to us kind of, brought me this first time I'd heard about it. The new way of figuring the MO maintenance of effort. And so, you know, looking at the numbers, I still have questions about it. I feel like we're being double jeopardized on this. I don't know if it's a word or not. I know what double jeopardy is. Being charged somebody twice or something. And I felt like we're being kind of doubled, dipped. And the numbers, that's what the numbers say. And so I'm gonna let Andrea kind of explain what happened. As I say, the budget was flat, we thought. And, you know, I look at the numbers and the numbers, the fund balance number is a drop. The budget we had, we all proved, had a fund balance of eight point three million dollars. Since the change. And the fund balance now we're bringing brought is seven point five, almost seven point six. So there's a difference of about seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that we have suddenly lost in our fund balance. And our budget itself, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The imposed expenses, our revenue, I'm sorry, was nineteen point one six six million. Now, the new budget reflects eighteen point four three nine million. So there's this, right, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars is the difference that we are now asking to all sudden, where did it go? In my opinion. But it's gone from the fund balance, it's gone from the revenue. And, you know, the explanation was it will be returned to our fund balance. Kind of what I get. I'm gonna, Andrea, I'll let you tell me where I'm missing on this. Because it's very kind of complicated, but very disheartening too, to have what we feel like was an excellent budget and have it sent back with a reduction of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in our fund balance, which is reflected in our revenue. I also want to spread, clear one thing else up. It keeps being said that we were receiving five million dollars. The five million dollars keeps being thrown at us by certain county commissioner members. And it's four point three million dollars. Okay, so we did not get the money from TISA that everybody thought. Five million dollars, I never knew they were, that came from. But it keeps being said that we're getting five million dollars dropped in our lab. It wasn't dropped in our lab, as Ms. Leaky and I talked about. It was given to us for educating our students here in Franklin County. It was not dropped in our lab for anything other than educating kids in Franklin County. And it's being diverted now. So, you know, I really feel like we're the big losers here. And I'll kind of let Andrea speak and then hold forward the discussion on what we wanna do about our budget.
Sitting behind the podium. Okay, so basically, what the finance committee approved to do is to send the school budget back. I know when the school committee met, I guess Fisher Eldridge was there. He had mentioned that he was going to make a motion to reduce the maintenance of effort by the loss of students. In that process, in figuring, negotiating that, how that gets done, navigating it is a better word. The chief fiscal officer for the Department of Education, Mary Ann Dursky, we work with her all the time. She is the one person that determines whether or not there has been a substantial loss of students in order to reduce maintenance of effort. And she does that on an annual basis when asked. She found that we had lost a hundred and eleven of our students, I think. And she figured the local maintenance of effort off of our original budget, the original school budget revenue. Now, the revenue numbers that go into making up the local maintenance of effort, when you look at the budget, you'll see a subtotal that says local taxes, total local taxes. There are more revenue numbers that make up the local maintenance of effort.
Wait, on what page?
Page one. Page one, yeah. So that eighteen four thirty-nine zero zero two, that's not the only local maintenance effort. You also have your marriage license, your cable TV franchise, which are the four one thousand, forty-one thousand numbers. You've got a little bit lower, forty-four one one oh investment income, forty-four one twenty lease rentals. And then also you have the TVA and state revenue sharing, which is forty-six eight fifty-one. Those numbers are the ones that make up the test of the local maintenance revenue.
Are those numbers not also included in the original budget from last year?
They are. And what we did in the budget that the school board approved to send to finance, took into account amending the revenues to more actual. So we budgeted seven million ninety thousand for sales tax. And the actual, we get increased it, the estimated to the seven five eleven zero zero zero. So the finance committee made a motion the other night at the meeting to not only reduce by the loss of the students, but to also take that loss from the original local maintenance of effort. We have not amended the budget yet to include these revenues. So basically, we went back to the, had to go back to the original budget. That's what Mary Ann did. And then she took into account the reduction. And she gave me the revenue amount for the local maintenance of effort. So not only did we start back at the original revenue for fiscal year twenty-three, but then we took the reduction instead of taking it from the more estimated revenue that you're getting. So even though we don't amend the budget to increase the sales tax revenue, you're still getting that revenue. That's the schools by state law. That's how that is apportioned. Even though we don't budget what we think we're gonna get, we still get that. If we budgeted five million, you'd get the eight million, getting eight million. So basically, that's what's been adjusted in the budget. So eighteen five ninety-one, eighteen million five ninety-one, I think, was the amount of the maintenance of effort that we had to amend. So that's the local maintenance of effort that is in the budget.
So how much is differences there in the original amount that Ms. Dursky gave us that would be taken out of maintenance of effort? And then the difference in that and the money that now would be taken out of three hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, exactly.
So that's why, there's where I see the double jeopardy.
All they gave, I think it was.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
Almost seventy-five thousand.
Three hundred thousand dollars out.
But it was based on two different months of student loss numbers.
Yeah.
So the numbers that she used the last time were from March. The numbers she used originally for the month before.
Which is, this is another caveat of it. The actual local maintenance of effort is not actually determined until the books are closed, the last student count is in. But of course, hopefully, we've already got a budget approved. I think we have a good budget here. Yes, you're taking more of a loss than fund balance. You still would, if we had not done the Clark Project in this current fiscal year, we would still have been putting funds back into fund balance. When I look at the budget, the original budget for last year, we had proposed to use one million, I think eighty-two thousand of fund balance in this current original budget. And then now with this budget, as the revenues are adjusted, we're budgeting to use a hundred and ten million? Yeah. Not a hundred and ten million. One million ten thousand. So we're, you are still projecting to use less than what you budgeted to use in the previous year. I do feel confident you won't use all of that.
So what will happen to the money that we don't use?
The money that you don't use, it goes into your fund balance, yeah.
But any money that we get, any amended money that we get during the year, also will go into the fund balance?
Well, it does bring into question, and I mentioned this at finance, because I think, I feel like it puts Jeannie and I in a situation where it's, you know, it's... Basically, Mary Ann met with the comptroller's office, local division level finance, Steve Osborne. And I had, I posed the question to her. You know, I had guidance that stated, you know, we need to amend the revenues just like we do the expenditures. And so Cindy and I had started doing that. And so she said that she would put that on the agenda with him, that I talked to her on Friday, they met on Monday. And I got back with her that afternoon to find out what she, what came of it. She wanted to talk to him about it. And basically, he said that you would not want to amend your school revenues to increase the maintenance of effort unless the commission approved it. So he's saying that we don't have to amend school revenues because it does increase the maintenance of effort. So, you know, I guess, I feel like that we need a procedure in place so that we'll know whenever we're doing an amendment. You know, my first thought is if we have a budget amendment, if you have something come up, instead of using fund balance, let's use excess revenue. But with a school fund, they're saying you don't necessarily do that. And I don't want it to become an issue every time we have a budget amendment. You understand what I'm saying? That, you know, you might approve a budget amendment and then it go to county commission and then not approve it. I guess, you know, the only thing is if you have something big come up that you, that you feel like you wanna request, you know, to increase the maintenance of effort, we would make that request, you know, openly. So they would understand that that's what's happening when they approve an amendment that's increasing those revenues. So that's basically what's happened.
So the sales tax, you're, you're estimating it's seven point nine million?
That's a five percent increase. And that's what I've budgeted estimate for the debt service fund as well.
If it's more than that, we get fifty percent?
If it's more than that, you get what you get, yeah.
If it's less than that, what happens?
You only get what we collect.
Will anybody make up the difference of maintenance of effort at that point?
It's not required. The maintenance of effort is from budget to budget. So, you know, if, if we don't get that amount, I know in the past sometimes they have made up the difference, like with property tax. I know that in some years they have, because I remember cutting those checks. So, you know, you might.
That's where I was, the school committee could have met and they could have heard all these things and, and asked me and put on some of your questions.
Generally, the only year that we don't get real close on property tax collections is in reprisal. Because I'm using the state's numbers and not the property. is in reprisal, because I'm using the state's numbers and not the property state's numbers.
Can I just, so, there was $450,000, like, change when they looked at our lower numbers, is that right?
Right.
Originally, so, they were taking $450,000 from our budget because it decreased the maintenance of effort and putting that back into the county budget, is that right? But now there's another $300,000?
Yes.
Can you explain to me one more time?
The first change, the first change, they wanted me to reflect an increase on the sales tax, because you actually collected more than, so that was the first change.
And wanted to reflect that they had more in the budget?
Yes, we increased the estimated sales tax and reduced the county property tax accordingly to balance that out. That was the first reduction. The second reduction was based on the, the loss of students. And the state figured that.
So, wait, but why did they, what? So, if, so I guess I don't, so the $450,000 was to the change in maintenance of effort, but then?
Yet the maintenance of effort was reduced because of loss of students.
That's that they, it was figured first time.
On sales tax?
On sales tax.
Because you received more sales tax than what we originally.
But the main difference was caused of the drop in enrollment.
Right.
You're, you're like two times. Well, the first was also because of students. The only way you drop maintenance of effort is if we lose students enrollment. So, we did that, and then we did it again, put this up again.
They found out that they did not have to amend the revenues. That's different from a loss of students.
Still say it's double jeopardy, it's double.
So, you were cut in two different ways, two different reasons.
My, my question at this point is, bottom line, our budget that we originally prepared and approved will decrease by approximately $700,000.
Only the fund balance. Your budget remains the same. I, I still feel like you have a good budget.
Our fund balance will, will...
Your unassigned fund balance.
And the only place we'll see the loss of any funds is in the fund balance.
This year, this year.
I, I had to, I had to say a couple of things. One is that, yes, we may have lost, according to our records, 75 to 100 students. But I promise you, for the 46, almost 4,700 students that remain enrolled in our school system, the cost for educating those students has gone up. Just because students have, have chosen to live somewhere else or go to a different school or whatever, does not mean that our cost for educating the remaining students does not increase every year and every day. The second thing I want to know is, will this $700,000, it's gonna come from the school system budget, that could be used by any, any number of things that, that we as a school board, that our director, that our teachers might feel are needed to improve and support public education? Will the counties, because I'm a team player, will the county's budget issues be solved with our $700,000?
You know, it'll help as a whole, yes. Yes, it won't help as a whole. It won't solve all the problems.
Well, then, then, I don't feel like I'm on the right team, I'm a team player. If it would solve the county's problems, then I would say, let's all pull together and do what we need to do for Franklin County. But the county still has to go somewhere else, and they still have to do another step to make their budget work.
I do, I have to look at every fund, which includes debt service and paying school debt.
You know, we're, it's crazy, but we'd be better off losing a thousand students than we are losing 100 students. Because if you lose 100 students, your costs do not go down.
Your costs don't go down.
But at all. But we lose money. We lose money from the state as well. We lose money from the state and now the county, we jump in, and we're losing money from county and the state because we lose 100 kids. And if we lose a thousand kids, we could cuss the teachers. But 100 kids is not negating cutting a single teacher or employee anywhere. It just doesn't.
I understand. I look at your per people cost and compare, you know?
At the end of the day, we're $730,000 short than we were a couple of weeks ago.
Which eliminates $737,000 worth of improvements, programming, additional teachers, maintenance, some of the things that that money could actually be used for in a, in a positive and constructive way.
You know, I don't think I'm out of line in saying that, I think that some of the county commissioners feel like that the local maintenance of effort, the way we were handling it, was getting out of, out of control. We, you know, we went from a local maintenance of effort of $12 million up to $18 million within a fairly short amount of time. You know, excuse me, the sales tax.
How did that happen?
Sales tax.
Our sales tax has increased.
And it means those revenues.
The sales tax and property tax goes up, then why should it not reap benefits? I mean, that's what the money is, that's what taxes is for, county general and, and schools. So, we were taking our portion and sucking with it. County been getting their portion as well. So, you know, both of us get the money because it's raised, it's not just the school getting all the money.
Well, they don't get sales tax like the school system does.
No, but...
They get 50% of what's outside the city limits, which ends up being about 37%.
What is county's budget now? County general budget, 40, pretty close, right? Chris, you ought to know that I'm talking here. 45 million, 40...
22,593.
22, just, is that just the entire county?
No, that's just county general.
County general, yes. Everything county funds, I guess, is what I meant. Big up 45 million, I think.
Oh, yeah. I mean, with the school, you're looking at savings.
With an outside school, I guess what happens.
Outside the school, if your budget's 40 something, you're probably looking at 35 million, approximately.
You know, my colleagues have heard me say this, not every year, but from time to time, I have to remind those who are listening, that public education has been under attack for 20-plus years now, solidly under attack for 20-plus years. And that there's a mindset shifting to continue to attack and underfund or minimally fund. And I look back, I read an article this week, that Thomas Jefferson, one of our founding fathers, understood the need for public education. He wrote, "A system of general instruction shall range every description of our citizens from the bridges to the forest, as it was in the earliest, so will it be the latest of all public concerns of which I shall permit myself to take interest." He saw that as the responsibility of the public, and he saw the value of public education many years ago, 300. The county's problems will not be solved, and our profits will be knocked out from under us because of what we might could do with money to improve the education system in Franklin County, to take care of maintenance, to do any, any number of things that might benefit students and learning.
But there's also another reflection to that, in that this is going to really make it very difficult going forward to get raises in our system, which we've worked so hard to try to get up to where we were when we thought of this 10% raise.
And I would continue that, and if you needed to request funds, I would request it.
But we can't live off that savings account all the time.
No, that's what I'm saying. I would request it.
And I've seen us turn down requests.
Yes, I have too.
Year after year after year. There was no request for new money in this budget. I remember requesting 300,000 to give teacher raises one year.
And then they turned it down.
Well, there was a request reflected in the budget to increase the maintenance of effort. So, so, yes, there technically was a request, although you were not requesting new property tax.
But at the end of the day, we're still $730,000 short than we were a couple of weeks ago. So, we've got to make some decisions on how do we solve that problem.
I just, I have to say, you know, you've been through this budget twice. Unless you've learned something since your last meeting, that's not worthy of being in the budget, I would approve the budget.
I, I disagree with you 100%. We're at 7.5 million is what our estimated fund balance is going to be. Okay, we have to have 2.5 million to meet our monthly payroll. That leaves $5 million to play with.
Well, you also have reserved funds that are gonna be there, but not. All of that reserve is in your fund balance.
Right.
So, you've got it.
But they're reserved for a reason.
Yeah, but I'm saying that's cash flow.
Sure, sure. That gets back to $5 million.
It's not like you're not gonna make payroll. That's what I'm saying.
That gets back to $5 million. So, basically, 730,000, when you divide $5 million by 730,000, how many years that get you before we're at zero? Eight. So, in eight years, we're less than 2.5 million remaining in fund balance. Now, we can still do a budget because that's less than our 3%. But, and this is not accounting any reduction, any further reductions from TISA, which we know is coming. It doesn't count any further reductions from our maintenance of effort, which we know is coming. And then the big thing is our fund balance is going to be gone in eight years if we pass this budget like it stands tonight, because we can't guarantee that we're gonna have extra money come in. We can't guarantee that we're going to come in under budget. You know, there's, a couple of years ago, we were at a couple dollars, a couple hundred thousand dollars in the rent. So, we can't guarantee those things. We don't know what the future holds, but we know what today holds. And today, we're at a crossroads. If we vote to pass this budget, the 730,000 coming out of our fund balance annually, not just this year, this is annually, in eight years, we will be broken.
And remember, we are challenged within the next three years to raise our starting salaries to 50,000.
And as it stands, that's, where's that gonna come from? The state never provides 100% of this. So, where's the rest of that money gonna come from? Oh, it's, it's gonna come from fund balance. Fund balance isn't the, the answer to everything. I mean, we're gonna have to make cuts tonight, you know? Could we have stood the 300,000? Yeah, we, we can stand 300,000. We can't, 730,000. We have to make cuts tonight. At least, that's my opinion.
I don't think that we know, I'm not taking the opposite view from that, I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't think we, we know what we know until we know what we know. We don't know what's gonna come back down. We don't know what is gonna supply. We never do.
But we know TISA projections are us continuing to lose students.
And this, this budget was developed, I feel like, with us operating with a window of unknown every year, every year. We don't know how many teachers we're gonna need, we don't know what major repair or maintenance we have to, to provide. There's a, there's a big unknown, and this is, this is a best estimate working document.
That's all it is.
That's all it is.
We have three options. One, we've adjusted the budget, adjusted wherever we level want to. Two, what would happen if we sent back the original budget? Can the county?
I think it would get approved.
Can they automatically do, cut the other 300,000? But it, it shows 400,000 coming out of maintenance of effort, that's 450,000 coming out of maintenance of effort to the last vote, is correct? Or did it not?
Yeah, that was...
So, I guess the other night, what I was confused, why are we, the maintenance of effort, I understand that, okay? We're gonna lose 400,000, and it's gonna come out of the fund balance. But the other part is what kills me, especially with no notice, nobody, you know, get blindsided by that, and giving the county commissioners actually a chance to hear the, what, you know, what they're voting. So, all they're gonna hear now is see the budget that shows 750,000 left, not knowing how...
I'm sure the survey will come up when we have the budget workshop, you know, and we'll talk about that.
It should have already come up, my fault. It should have already been discussed.
Well, you know, I'm sitting here looking at your 19, 20 actual, and your unassigned fund balance was 5,705.
Well, now, why did we get that big increase in our fund balance this year?
The sales tax. The sales tax has continually grown.
And they didn't reappropriate the property tax.
Right.
Used to, in the past, each year, they would adjust the percentage of property tax of the school guide to account for the rise of sales tax. They have not been doing that in the last...
Two years.
How many years?
One or two years.
At least.
They adjusted it for six years in a row by...
You're getting growth off of sales tax and off of property tax. So, in the original budget, that is, that was the original request, was to reduce the property tax rate to balance out.
That's what I thought was fair. And that's what you did. Then you came along with this other thing, that took more money out. That's the part I'm testing.
They made it a flat line to start with.
I mean, our budget has some, we have some things there that we can, that we can cut pretty easily, to get a few hundred thousand dollars. Well, we've got 120,000 in there for a new bus. We can cut that.
Is that not far from the proposed schedule for all supply center buses?
And I'm not sure, but didn't we even purchase a bus this year, did we, Stan? We did. We just gotta get a better price than what we've given.
Plan was, a couple of years ago, actually, started trying to get a bus every year. We hadn't bought one for like three years, so bought one this year.
Do we have buses that are going out of service this year?
Eh, there's about three or four that are within a year or two going out. So, we'll be going out. How much is anybody, 120,000?
So, are these buses that we use for like sporting events and things like that, players, field trips?
Baseball, field trips.
Day transportation of students, those are all contracted.
They, they are buses that transportation use when they're broke down, so we have to have a couple of good reading on...
Kind of on standby.
On standby.
Without regular rounds.
The regular rounds.
So, the finance committee turned it, I mean, to go back to sort of the question you asked, so the finance committee turned this down, which isn't necessarily like, so, they don't get the final decision, like it could go to the whole county commission?
It goes to the finance committee, and they vote on it. If it passes, it goes right to county commission. If it goes, if it fails three times, it all back and goes to county commission. Or the third, third failed again.
I was kind of looking at it out, it just seems really unfortunate. We worked really hard with the education committee to work things out, we thought we got things, and then it's a totally different story, the finance committee.
If we want to keep our current raises like we've got in there, then we've got to make some cuts from some other places.
I don't think we need to, to touch the raises.
I don't think, I don't think, we're gonna have a tough time feeling what we've got with the raises that we got. So, but we've got, we added some new positions, do we need all those new positions? Well, in a perfect world, it'd be great to have them. Well, in a perfect world, it'd be great to have them.
Do we know whether we need them?
That's, that's a good question. We need, we need to get them out without, so maybe...
It sounded like they were going to be used for, for, yes, for third grade retention, is what I understood.
I'm talking about guidance counselors.
No, we need the guidance counselors.
Well, we need raises too. We have to make cuts that...
And like, yeah, we have a guidance counselor every single...
We will for next year, but we do not.
Well, I just committed. In a perfect world, that's what we won't have, but as of today...
We're three short.
We're three short. We need to hire three to make that happen. So we can budget to accommodate any applications out.
Three positions are open.
And one of those is high, ones at high schools, and basically, the two schools that we tried, we were combining or something. We're short with those two positions.
How many do we have in high school?
Two.
We've got two and one open.
And we counseling, we have a high school too, right?
Three total, two is one open. And fully staffed, we have three counselors in high school.
But then, the third is not a new position, it's just an open position.
Correct.
And it just came open here.
The two, the elementary schools that were, that were sharing, those are the positions that are new positions.
Yes.
Have they been filled?
We've hired, we've hired one. The, there was a recommendation to employ two. One person declined their offer. So we feel like one of those two will be coming. But we, in the meantime, we have two opens. So point in time, we're, we're down one. Well, from where we work, right, from where we work.
Good. If we're going to cover it, then we'll make it out.
That's right, that's exactly right.
So one option is to approve the budget as is. Do you have a recommendation, Mr. P?
Yeah, I really don't know. Just frustrated that we're having to do this. But I feel like it's unnecessary, I think we should, should have passed it, should have passed it, but it was a budget that we had the other night, and we wouldn't be having this discussion. That's just the way I feel, I, you know. I'm sure the county commission, you know, Sarah Portau, you know, it's not going to solve their problem. I know they, they're having problems as well. But, you know, I'll go ahead and say it, we screwed up last summer when we didn't pass the property tax. We had a chance to give more property tax last summer, we didn't do it, and that's messed up for everybody. And I know every county commissioner probably agrees with me. They won't, maybe they may not say that, but we had a chance last summer to put the county financially in much better shape than it's in, much better, much better shape, and we didn't take advantage of it. And now we are where we're now, school works back. The county commission probably would have not even lowered maintenance of effort. Because I think, you know, we've lost students for several years now, and it's never happened before. And now, you know, and here we are. And I, you know, I've been hard on Andrea, but Andrea, she's been very open and has helped me through this whole thing, helped me understand the budget, and she's worked very hard on her budget, so I, I don't want Andrea to think of that.
I understand you're upset, but we have worked well together, and we've been learning as we go. We haven't been through this process.
Could we, you should approve the budget as it is?
What is the possibility of taking no action tonight, but giving our school committee an opportunity to at least share with us their feelings and their perspective? Because I think we have been meeting with the school committee all year, and now, all of a sudden, they're not part of this change.
I'd love to hear from them.
Do you, do you like to comment? Would it make a difference?
I don't know. I don't.
Were you aware of...
Not all the particulars, but I'd heard the rumblings that something might be coming. I think we've got a meeting after y'all's next board meeting is the one that's scheduled currently, the fourteenth, I want to say it is. The school committee meeting.
Andrew, what's the next step on what you did, what will be the next step?
Well, we, I need an approved budget to take back to finance. That's, that's one.
They have a special call? We're the only one outright?
Yes.
Just ask a crazy question here. Finance committee has decided that they're going to do this. Does the full commission not have any say so, or...
Yes, the full commission can change the budget.
Yeah, but you can't get to them until the final pass.
Right. You know, the finance committee approves a recommended tax rate and a recommended appropriations resolution that basically covers all of the budgets. So I can consolidate it and send it to the county commission. But they can change anything at the county commission, other than like reducing an expenditure line item for school or highway, they would have to send the budget back.
What I'm saying is, this all of a sudden production in maintenance of effort, that does not have to be approved by the commission to do that?
It will be approved. If, if the finance committee approves a consolidated budget and I send it to county commission, if they approve it, they approve it. If they don't, they can send it back.
That's still, that's not where, that's not where I'm going. I'm just saying that, that the power of...
The county commission does not approve it before finance committee.
But finance committee says we're going to longer maintenance of effort. What I'm trying to say is, why does the county commission not have oversight on that before it's put into the overall budget?
Because that's, even, even in, I mean, every county has a budget committee that makes these recommendations. Whether or not you're into the financial act of eighty-one, or fifty-seven, or, or any, they all have budget committee that the budgets go to. And then they're consolidated and recommended to the commission.
That's why we have a finance committee meeting, committee, to have someone to oversight and discuss with us our budget. And then go to finance, but they got left out because the finance wanted to hijack it, send it that way.
You know, the last, was it the last school committee we had?
I think.
Yeah.
Commissioner Eldridge, he had mentioned that, that he was going to make that motion at that meeting.
For maintenance of effort? Yeah.
And also the reduction, the reduction of student aid, yeah.
Right, I remember.
Because that's when we got the first quote from Mary Gerstke, that's why we went to her. But that was going off of March numbers. When the finance committee made that recommendation, we went back to her, and she used April numbers, which were worse than March numbers.
So why she uses May numbers, and they're worse than April?
Well, we hope that we pass the budget from August right now.
April is exactly the same as May.
The TISA, or student count?
The TISA is same, well, the TISA is the same, uh...
It's the student count.
Student count is what they use.
So we use April numbers.
So, you know, I think we, I think that we would, to have any kind of conference on, we would need to use April numbers.
But there's no guarantee that May numbers can't be used.
Well, if we approve a budget based on April numbers, then we got April numbers.
That's why.
You know, Mary Ann's just going to look at it, when we put the budget in, when we put the approved school budget in, that's when she does the maintenance of effort test. And as long as we make that April, we're good.
Now, Andrew, she told me that when she figures, she uses amended.
Right.
So we're going back, we're not even using amended, we're being asked to use the original.
Well, we haven't amended the original revenues. I see, that's the thing, we haven't amended those yet.
If we amended them, it would actually be even more of a cut.
No, it'd be three hundred thousand dollars less.
Because our, our pupil expense would be higher if we amended the budget, and therefore, that multiplication would come out even, we would be reducing even more.
Fund balance would be three hundred thousand dollars better. Well, I think we have all the facts.
Then, we're, we're going to continue to cut, coming up with another, well, more additional money beside the bus.
The only thing that I, I really think would be difficult, and I know it's hard, is all the two counselors who are on par, if we're not going to have them, then keeping them in budgets is taking up money in the way we're doing it now, you know, when we...
Do we, can I just ask, do we know how many unfilled positions we'll have as of right now?
We have nineteen unfilled certified positions. We plan, we need, we need to fill those nineteen.
So, Andrew, let me ask you...
In fact, we have to fill probably seventeen of those nineteen.
That includes the counselor?
Uh, that's why I said seventeen.
So whatever we pass as the proposed budget, will next year be the original budget, right? Which is what they're basing maintenance of effort for.
Correct.
So if we lower that, it would just cut our programs.
What would be the harm of this?
As if it's just not buying the bus and not hiring people.
Maybe it seems like we want to keep that, go to the square side, so they're just going to have fund balance every year from now on.
But if, if you don't have a bus, just live it in there, that's what we're talking about.
We change the proposed, if we don't pass the proposed, it will become the original.
That's what they're all about, I think.
So next year, when they start the original, to set the maintenance of effort, which they're going to do, if we lower this year's budget, then they're going to be starting down here, and they're going to lower it even more.
I miss the motion to screw the budget.
Pass the budget the way it is, you know.
Do what you kind of couldn't know, got to butt your face on that. I have some problems with cutting things out of the budget and putting it back in the fund balance. Because then we lose control if we, if we cut positions and just put that money back into fund balance, then we, we, if we needed them back for some reason, then we have to get permission to do that.
That money that you were talking about putting back into fund balance is not a guaranteed money. I mean, nobody's guaranteeing that we want to put half a million dollars back into fund balance.
Well, you're, but the suggestion is to cut a line item that will generate a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that would go back to fund balance, is that...
It, no, it just wouldn't come, I mean, basically, it wouldn't be in our budget.
But then next year, though...
But next year, they'll go back into that.
But it's the revenues that that is based off of, not your expenditures.
Right.
The state doesn't care how much you spend of it, we just can't give you any more than what your revenues are, budget.
But if we cut the...
That'll be in, you could cut seven hundred thousand dollars, and it won't matter.
The law states that the county has to give them...
One effect revenues affect like...
Correct.
Yeah, that's right. But the year after, it'll roll back over into the revenue, or what we projected. Where it's going to hurt is actually teacher projection raises the next years, next cycle. They're the ones that are going to hurt on this. So we have less money to give to teacher raises, is that correct?
Well, you know you're going to have some requirements coming up next year on the state scale.
So that's where the, the teachers' salary going forward, you're going, in this loss of revenue opportunity, I just call it revenue opportunity, it's going to be lost from this, which will affect teachers. And the teachers don't get the raise next year you want, you know where it... Yeah, I'm very frustrated with it, I'm just, I still say it, double jeopardy. Taxes once, that wasn't enough, taxes twice. In Boston, they did something about that, I don't...
They could turn that around, I'm used to it. They could say, we budgeted seven million and ninety thousand in sales tax, but you got seven point five million. But that's not like budgeted. So it's a double jeopardy there, it's just reverse. I just, you know, I feel like that you will end up putting more money in, into fund balance than what is estimated there. I don't know how much more, but I feel like that you will.
Any more risk we got to place there?
I think you got about one.
Where's that money going to come from again?
You put five hundred thousand, I think, in capital, like to make a start.
Be a start, I'm probably going to leave one larger, so I'll get it down there.
Four, seven, eight, nine, four, one point five?
One, four, five.
Well, there it is. Yeah, and the main...
And there's something else I was thinking about, you took three point six million out for the train project, you took one point five out for... So that's a lot of money you took out of fund balance for a one-time capitalist finisher that you won't be making anymore. You know, on that particular one. So, yeah. Well, you've got your train project that you borrowed funds for. So I would think with the train project, and if Huntland are the last roofs that you have, which I know, how many roofs would that be, you know, two or three?
Six or seven.
Three, three, three or four. Gems are going to be...
Because you talked about doing, you know, a few at a time.
There's six or seven.
Yeah.
But they're smaller.
That just gets us wherever, you know, that just... And on the train, even with the train project, it has been made very clear, that was only about a third of the needs.
Yeah. But I feel like you've made a good gain on the roofs, I guess is what I'm saying, from where we started from.
And maybe more on the train, because we have been able to purchase a couple of air-conditioned units from Caprol that went down, they were in the plan to replace, had gone down, and we've been able to replace them. One of them actually was insured, so it was, within just a few years, it's going to be replaced, so it went down in Cowen, so we rarely insure it, and we defaulted it. But we're about halfway there on the maintenance, and roof, Huntland, not a, not a project. Opportunity Eric wins the lottery.
Let me give a lot of services.
Thank you.
You'll spend on college. We ever had a announcement, because I think she could have did it without me.
No, I need to do that last, I don't want nobody...
When does the county commission meet again?
The county commission, it's June nineteenth.
Are we going to have a special call to vote on budget?
Um, if, if we get a consolidated budget approved at the June sixty-six finance committee, we'll have a workshop between then and the nineteenth with the county commission, and they should have the budget before them on the nineteenth.
So when's the next one, Andrew, June sixth?
That's the regular meeting, yes.
The special call meeting is Thursday.
If you, if you guys approve the budget.
Okay, well, we got a pre-announcement.
So can I make, I make my motion again, I vote to approve it. And I vote to approve it, buzzes, and take the nearly quarter of a million dollars from the fund balance. And I vote to approve it, because I think the nearly quarter of a million dollars from the fund balance, even though I feel it is unfair.
Three quarter.
Nearly three quarters of a million, yes. Even though I feel it is unfair and not what's best for our students, that the money is being taken away from the district.
What, do you have a long-range plan, what's going to be locked closed? That's what's coming. That's what's coming. I guess it is.
I've been talking about that for years, you know, too, so.
I guess I feel like if we're talking about pulling the bus and things like that, we could still opt not to make those purchases later, if that seems to be in our best interest. But keeping the things in gives us the opportunity to keep those things if it seems like a good idea. And if it doesn't, then we can make those choices for what's best for the district.
And you can wait until we know what our exact any fund balance is. That will help, help you make those decisions.
Is that, what's the closing date on that?
Um, fund balance? Well, it's generally about the first of the fourth week, fourth week in July, before we have all of our information in.
So if we just, it's this year, can they just wait until the year of the year?
Next year. Next year.
Well, now, does the maintenance effort remain the same now for?
Three years.
Two years on the third.
No, they cut three years, the third year they have to do.
The maintenance effort was based on this year's April numbers against last year's April numbers and the original revenue, local maintenance. You can only do that two years in a row. On that third year, you have to receive a three percent increase.
Five hundred thousand dollars? So we're going to, in three years, you'll get five hundred thousand dollars. Do the math on that. In three years, you'll get five hundred thousand dollars, and then after that, you go three more years.
It's a year-to-year decision that they make.
Is there, is there an end game to all of this? To take this money from the school system and put it back into the county budget, and it won't, it won't solve the county budget issue? I just don't know if I'm rehanded in that direction. I don't see anything being accomplished. I don't see any major accomplishment.
I totally agree with you, we have had some of the no problem.
I mean, it's sort of like the thing with the tax system, right, like, so buying more things, things cost more, so the county, like, saying, oh, well, you're getting money, more money than you expected, it's sort of everyone is, and it doesn't really make sense to punish or take away what's supposed to be coming to us, because it's more than we were supposed to. I mean, it's sort of more than the county as a whole was supposed to, but.
It's, is that the way, swelch opportunity though, and swelch possibilities?
I'd make the plan, you know, ask for one percent every year, and then, you know, and by that third year, you've got three percent. That must be adequate growth, or the state will not set that.
Whether we approve this budget or not, the teachers are okay with it, right?
Unless you reduce it, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's the point, we don't want to.
We don't want to reduce, that's the point.
If you approve this budget as is, yes, they get their ten percent raise.
This year, next year.
Can't speak for next year.
I, I just flash back to the year that we needed three hundred thousand dollars to give a small raise to teachers that we returned, flatly returned.
Three times.
Three times? We walked away with the output we needed to take care of our teachers.
Well, we have a motion to close.
We've decided we just want to die at like the second, or wait a second?
The second.
Right, the second, we have a motion, Ms. Gerviskey, to approve the budget as it is. Even though it's not, I think, what she's saying is, we're not being pretty fair. And we have said that, so. Do we want to go call, or do we want to?
Go call.
If it's your pleasure, go call. All right, Ms. Lady.
Ms. Lakey?
I will extend the vote.
Ms. Roberts?
I.
Ms. Jones?
We elect that we, um...
I have the three concerns, I should have the four.
I.
I.
No.
I want to make a big claim, the only reason I would say I is because of the teachers. That is the only reason that I would vote for this budget, is to protect our teachers and make sure they get what they are coming to.
For one year.
Why did you say that?
Because that, that's where we are.
So are you saying that next year, there will not be enough money? I am so new at this, I listen carefully.
Nothing's going to be taken away from you.
That's that opportunity, there's an opportunity for seven, uh, we're losing opportunity of seven hundred thousand dollars, having our budget next year for teacher raises.
For new teachers.
Now, we were going to lose four hundred thousand, that probably anyways. Four hundred fifty thousand would cause the maintenance effort. There's not anything we can do about that, we're going to lose that. The other three hundred is, is my contention, that that's three hundred thousand, we're ready to...
I think we.
Push it ahead.
And we, again, we can ask the county commission to give us to make up that difference.
I think it's a whole, and the county, we have to look at protecting our teachers. I, I just feel like that right now, they, they need, and continue to keep needing. They deserve it. Exactly, and that's why I just...
Last year, they didn't start with their raises, right, because the budget wasn't approved, so they started the year on the old salary scale, right?
No, no, we didn't.
It wasn't for our work.
The teachers were approved on that part. Like I said, I don't want, I, I have looked at this budget protected, and I think there are places things could be put. I don't want to take anything that's going to injure any teacher, continuing to get a raise, because it's, it's only fair to them. And I hope the county commission realizes. They deserve it, they need it, you know. And I honestly don't know how about it. I just, I see it both ways, I see that there's issues. I just want to make sure our teachers and our children, our teachers are protected and our children have a good place for their teachers.
What's the vote is for?
The vote is five.
Five.
Five, one and one standing, and no one down.
And one know and one don't know.
You can't say.
I just, I just want to know what's best for them, and I do not know what the answer is, listening to all this, I honestly don't know.
If there are five votes, if there are five votes.
It's not going to make a difference, I know it's not going to make a difference.
I think you made a point. So whatever way you go, I think everybody understands, you know.
Is my face red? Oh, my girls, I just don't know. I am going to vote, yes, but I am going to say that I hope the county commission and the budget committee understands how very important it is that we protect our teachers, and these teachers are granted raises. Cost of living rises, they're entitled to, just like everybody else.
Let's see.
What can I ask? Okay, so that vote, and now is six, uh, one and one standing. So that means we'll be standing this budget back. Is or any?
Anything else?